Welcome everyone to Millville Planning Board Meeting. It is Monday, February 13th and we'll open the meeting with roll call. Justin Allen.
Here.
Jason Mailey.
I am here.
Pam Williams, our Associate Planning Member. We have Dylan Lindholm with us, our Junior Planner, and I am here. Chris and Preston, I don't think are coming this evening. Alright, so we'll get started with the approval of minutes from January 23rd meeting, which Dylan had emailed us the other day.
I also think I put a copy in here.
Yep. Yeah, there's a copy in the packet. And we also have the meeting minutes from the 30th in this packet.
Do we make separate motions?
Yes.
Yeah.
Make a motion to accept the minutes from January 9th, 2023?
The 23rd?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the 23rd.
I will second that.
Alright, any discussion? All in favor? Justin?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes for the 30th?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from, what is it, January 30th?
January 30th.
I'll second them.
Any discussion? All in favor? Justin?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
I say aye. Before we get into our bylaw diagnostic, do we have any updates?
Yeah, I do. I actually don't have an address, but I think I discussed this one with you guys before. There is a two-family slash three-family issue going on. It's actually something we don't have to worry about in Planning Board. I sent them to ZBA.
Okay.
So it was an existing two-family, it's been assessed as a two-family for many years, but in 1996 it was assessed as a three-family randomly. The owner is adamant that it is a three-family and that it hasn't been assessed properly since 1996. He wanted Planning Board, well, building wanted Planning Board to have him present his evidence.
Yep.
But what I realized is that the Planning Board can't grant him what he wants granted. It's that he doesn't want to put in, what's it called, sorry, sprinklers.
Is that required for a three-family?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, so he wants to be grandfathered in. But you guys wouldn't be able to grant that, so I told them ZBA would be the best place to do that. So I pushed him over there.
Okay.
The other one is 38 Central Street. It's, I emailed Pam about it.
Yeah.
It's a business that's going to be moving into this address here, Bruno Antiques. They're just opening an office space. It's not actually like a shop. They might have one or two people come in to drop off things to be auctioned, but it's just going to be some office workers there getting things ready for actual auction, like events that are going to go on outside.
This one with the glass storefront?
Yeah.
Yeah, the one that's been under renovation now. It does look nice.
Yeah, so I was handed the sign-off from the clerk for the business certificate. I did my due diligence, I just wanted to look at the bylaws and it's a special permit. Even an office space of, I think they said four or five people at the max, it's a special permit. Any professional office and any retail place and almost anything, any business, nearly every business is a special permit. So I have given them the requirements, things that we will need from them, and the one thing is they are, they are not sure if, you know, they have an engineer to draw up site plans.
Yeah.
He's worked with an engineer before, I know he has another property that he's developing, but this is, this is just a business that they've, you know.
Is there anything that he has to dig deep into it or he just needs a site plan?
I mean, the site plan is just going to be the building that's already existed. I don't think he's changed much.
If you wanted to recommend to him, it's one I used was mysitplan.com.
Okay.
It was fantastic.
Okay.
You send them a copy of the layout.
Hmm.
They do a Google Earth on it.
Yep.
And they'll actually do a site plan that costs you about 200 bucks.
Okay.
It was fantastic.
Maybe I can recommend that.
Like five rounds with Lincoln on it, but at the end of the day.
Which is easier than a private engineer.
Cost you nothing.
Okay, that's great, yeah.
It's legit, like it's a nice deal.
He was like, can I just draw a picture for you?
Which I believe we've had in the past.
I think you'll be surprised, I had it done in a day.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So I'll give him that. I've told him the fee is $500 from what I can see on the latest fee schedule.
Yep.
I've asked him to contact the assessor for a butters list. So I, once he can get all that together.
All the public hearing and stuff.
Yeah, I'll set out notices and, yeah.
Is it going to slow them down at all for what they're trying to do?
It will.
Yeah.
It's a process.
One of the things that we quickly spoke about with Jack as well is just, you know, is this normal? Like, because it sounded restrictive to me and he said that it did sound restrictive compared to other towns.
Yeah.
That we have a special permit for everything?
For everything in our business district and, yeah, so I don't know if, we've had.
Business that we attract.
Yeah, I mean, we want to attract business, but we make it really hard for them to come to town.
Especially when they take in something that looked dead.
And made it beautiful, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So maybe you can help advise us on, on what we can be looking at to make that not such a restrictive process moving forward?
Yeah, I went back through, this might sort of bring us to our next topic.
Yeah.
I went through the bylaw diagnostic again. They, they mentioned maybe some of the use regulations, but I think it really should be a focus.
Yeah.
Just because I believe Millville is doing a master plan.
We have a master plan.
You have one now?
Yep.
Okay. You might want to think about the, the use regulations because you want it to fit in with the master plan. You want, you want some sort of growth. It doesn't have to be, oh, we want to develop all of Millville, but.
No, but we want growth and it's been identified in the master plan, it's been identified in a number of other things, but we're not making progress towards making it a little bit easier.
The last time we met, we were focused on how can we make bed and breakfast more attractive, but a bed and breakfast is going to be, nothing's going to be attractive if everything requires a special permit.
Yep. Alright, I would love to take a look at that, maybe our next meeting we could prepare to take a look at that, maybe send us some of.
Yeah, I can pull up the use regulation chart.
Yeah, pull up the chart, but like, what are, I'd be more curious, like what are other towns doing that, that makes it a little bit easier that we could consider, especially nearby towns? Like if someone's not going to come to Millville because we're restrictive, so they go to Uxbridge instead, or they go to Mendon instead, or Blackstone, I'd be curious.
Yeah, yeah, I'll put some comparisons, definitely.
Thank you.
Do we have, do we have any data on, you know, people who have explored doing a business in Millville but have opted not to because of how restrictive our things are?
Yeah, I can always dig through the old files, I have.
Like just a, you know.
Mountains of paperwork on my desk.
A pile of, oh, these people were interested and for whatever reason never followed through or.
I don't know.
I don't know that we have anything, but there's plenty of paperwork to go through.
Calculate the tax revenues that we didn't take in because of that.
Yeah, the thing is that when the planning position, the, my position was sort of, there's no one here maybe.
Yeah.
I think business certificates through the clerk probably just went through without any planning oversight. And honestly, I mean, Diane, the clerk was surprised when I stopped the application. I said, it is a special permit, and she was like, why would that be the case, you know?
Because it's always been.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you think that's something that we could tackle before spring meeting? Do you think that's a heavy chunk?
It might be a heavy chunk for spring, yeah. I mean, if we want to change one or two uses, we can.
We could just change one or two uses and then tackle the bigger pieces of it later.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, but that might be worth looking at. It's not that there's not space for things to be happening, so.
I think just they shouldn't need a special permit at all.
Yeah, I think we all agree with you, but like Dylan said, it's required because of.
It's written that way, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, well, let's, let's take a look at least at the, some of the uses and we can make those decisions at our next meeting.
Yeah.
Otherwise, if that paperwork comes through and we need to set up something pretty quickly, I think we can be amenable to that.
Okay. Yeah, I'll go as quickly as I can, as soon as I get the butters list.
Like them to feel welcome?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm not sure if the board is able to waive any requirements. I know it's been done in the past, so we can, we can always.
We could look at that.
Because it doesn't seem like they're not trying to do the right thing. It's just that they're falling into that area.
And to be fair, I'm sure other businesses have gotten in because there wasn't anyone checking the use regulations.
Okay, so how would we go about looking at that in a way that was equal?
I would ask, I can ask Jack, what do you think on that?
Let's ask Jack and see if he has a recommendation.
Yeah, I'm going to keep going with this applicant and just, you know, try to push forward, but I'll, I'll ask Jack if he thinks there's anything we can say. Oh, maybe waive a piece of the fee or waive one of the requirements or something.
Yeah.
You know, we need certain things like the butters list, but are there other things we don't need?
Or even just allow them to, you know, give an extension on whatever so that they can keep proceeding.
Exactly, yeah.
Anything else? Any other miscellaneous items before we dive in? So thank you Dylan for putting together all of our discussions from a couple of weeks back and it seems to be formed into pretty.
Coherent sentences.
Coherent sentences or was this quickly looking nine? Nine definitions that we're either adding or modifying from what is in our current bylaws. So I'm thinking this evening that we could maybe start by just reviewing the nine and then we can see about tackling a few more.
Yes, so I have those. I'll also mention two other documents in your packets here.
Yep.
Spelling and grammar issues, I thought that could be an easy win.
Ooh, that is an easy win.
I found six very easy things that we could just put on, you know, spring meeting and say, we just want to fix this.
Yeah.
Easy.
I think that's perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the other one is CMRPC said there were a bunch of definitions that were in different places, so I've collected them here.
Okay.
So they are not attached to that list of ones that are missing. These are just things that are already in the bylaw, but they're not in that definition section.
So we'd be talking about moving these to the definition section? Okay, that makes sense, so those do seem like easy wins?
Yeah, yeah, but we can start with, you know, what we did last time.
Yep.
And I can give you Jack's comments and anything else sort of.
Perfect, yeah, I think you said Joe weighed in, our building inspector, on a few. Alright, bed and breakfast.
So bed and breakfast, I, I will also mention that I've been working on trying to make a document of the zoning bylaws that is editable. We don't really have a PDF of it or anything like that or a document, so I'm making one. What I've run into is now I'm reading every single thing. We have a bed and breakfast section that might be important to review before we decide that this definition is, you know, before we agree on this definition.
Okay.
Which is 10504. And there's two paper copies of the bylaw if anyone wants to take a look. But 10504 has four sections, A, B, C, D. It explains that a bed and breakfast is an accessory use. Bed and breakfast inns are permitted as an accessory use to a single-family dwelling. The dwelling shall be the primary residence of the owner or manager. Exterior alterations, no exterior alteration shall be made to the building except for handicap accessibility. Parking should be provided at the rate of one space per guest room. In addition to that required for the principal residential use and proposed signage plans, the applicant has to submit a plan showing the location, wording, dimensions, and construction materials of any proposed signs, historical commission if needed, et cetera. So I think it was just important to mention that while we're also changing the definition, that that's the other place that bed and breakfast shows up.
Yep, makes sense. Although it does seem that, I guess it doesn't. We say owner occupied, but this specifies that it's the primary residence of the owner or manager. This is basically the same.
Yeah.
I guess, I guess where there's some duplication, is that something that we need to take into consideration or does it matter?
Duplication is totally fine as long as it is duplication.
Okay.
And not mixed messages.
Yep.
Yeah, but I think we're good.
Okay.
From what I can see here. My other comment is Jack was, Jack highlighted six.
Yep.
I think it was five before.
Yep.
If I'm not mistaken, yeah, five, and he was just surprised at why, why did we say six? So I told him that, that we talked about it and you said seven seems like too much, five seems like too little.
Yeah.
So, he didn't reply back to that, I think he's fine with that, but he just wanted to comment on it, yeah.
Okay. Is everyone, so everyone's still feeling pretty good about bed and breakfast?
Yep.
Yeah.
Alright, moving on, farm.
Farm, I have no comments from anyone. I took what we said and sort of tried to put them into nice sentences, so let me know what you think.
Yep. I, I thought these were what we talked about, I think it sounded good. My, my only concern was, do we need to look at where we use the word farm?
So same, same deal. Farm is, I'm trying to pull up the Schedule of Use Regulations, which is 100-302. The first part of that chart is agriculture.
Okay.
So I think that's where CMRPC, you know, why they said you should name it agriculture, not farm, because that's the title right there. And so we have four agricultural uses on the use regulations chart. Farm, agricultural, orchard, plant or tree nursery, including one single-family dwelling for the resident proprietor. And that is allowed by use in, in OR, I don't remember the districts. OR and VR, and then VC and CV are special permit. Farm, livestock and poultry, including one single-family dwelling for the resident proprietor. Same deal, yes, yes, special permit, special permit. We have sales room or stand for the display or sales of agricultural or horticultural products on a seasonal basis. Everyone can do that across the board. Backyard chickens is one, everyone can do that. So I think it's important to look at that again.
Yep.
And make sure that that fits our, our definitions here. Yeah, it doesn't, in the commercial section, it doesn't include farm, so all the agriculture was in those first four sections.
And so by reading it this way, if you were, you were looking at the Schedule of Use, you see the word agriculture, it wouldn't matter that we split them up in, in our definitions because it's termed just agriculture and not residential and commercial here, correct?
This agricultural section in the use regulations doesn't have any sort of space for commercial use. It says one single-family dwelling for the resident proprietor for either orchard, plant, tree nursery, or livestock poultry.
Yep.
So where, why do we need the agricultural use commercial is kind of the question?
Okay.
Does anyone know of any commercial farms in Millville? Do we have any yet?
No, but I guess my thought is if we don't have it in here, would, if one came, would it just be considered red? It would just be prohibited?
Yeah, completely.
Okay. It wouldn't just fall under this because this says agriculture and they would make the argument that it says agriculture and doesn't specify commercial or residential?
We would want to specify it somewhere.
Yeah.
We'd want to say, this is, these are the districts where you can do residential farming, these are the districts you can do commercial farming. You probably don't want to do commercial farming in the middle of a residential neighborhood.
No.
But yeah, usually, I think just above it, we have no use of land for any purpose or in any manner other than is permitted here in the schedule.
Okay.
And that's typical for most towns is that it's a prohibited use if it's not listed. You might be able to go to zoning or something, but it has to be listed.
Okay. Would we, would we then present the change to, just be super clear anyway, to the use schedule to call it agriculture residential? So that it would match, or agricultural use residential, so that it was matching up with our definition?
Yeah, and then perhaps we use that first definition that we have, the residential use, and maybe we hold off on the commercial until we go through the use regulations.
Yeah, exactly.
So we don't even need it?
We don't need it right now.
We don't need it.
But if we, yeah, if we edit the use regulations in the future and say, okay, we have some added uses, we can do that.
We're actually doing more by not proposing a definition for it.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. That makes sense to me.
Yeah.
And then these, these uses are pretty much, we hit upon everything.
Yeah.
Just making sure that there's not something here. No, alright. Looking at this, it makes me think that the use schedule really needs some updating.
It does, yeah, I think so.
Or at least here, like, because I know we were, I remember having the conversation about like bees, but like where would that fall on this list? It doesn't, so, yeah.
Yeah. But at least our definition is broad enough. Yeah, it keeps that open, so we don't have to edit both at the same time.
Yep.
Yeah.
Any other questions on farm?
No.
We agree as a board to update the current definition of farm to agricultural use residential?
Yes.
Using the language that Dylan wrote to us?
Yeah, now that you mention it though, like, do we need to include insects there?
Does that?
For bees?
Animal covers, I think.
Like animals, covers it?
Animals covers it?
Yeah.
Okay, works for me.
I don't know.
As long as there's no confusion.
If somebody comes and they say, I have bees, is that okay?
We'd say, our interpretation is.
The town planner will say animals.
Yes.
It's okay, yeah. And they can always come to Planning Board and confirm that with anyone.
And for the next one, I take back my coherent sentence.
Alright, moving on, height?
Height, my comment here is that Joe has given his okay on this. And then I talked to Jack afterwards and he said, make sure Joe's checked it. So Joe's checked it, we're good. He likes it.
Alright, were there any uses in the bylaw that you thought we needed to look at related to height?
I just saw height once. Let me see where I found it. Yes, so height is included in the third, the packet, I think, in the back of it. It's in 10901. In the wireless communications facilities district as a definition for that. So it's, I think the last, third page to the back. We got distance FAA, FCC, and then we have height.
Yep.
And they just say the distance measured from ground level to the highest point on the structure. What we can do is probably.
Update it in both places or remove it from here?
Hopefully, I would suggest moving it to, you know, deleting, deleting this one, removing the rest of them over. Yeah, that way we don't have to duplicate it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we can make a note when we get to this packet that our recommendation is going to be to delete it from this wireless communications package.
Yeah, just because the rest of them, hopefully we can move into all, a single section.
Okay. Alright.
So we want to replace the definition in 100-902 with the one we're proposing?
Yeah, well, no, we would delete the one from 902 and instead we're going to add to our section of definitions, because there's nothing in ours. So, right, we're, we're adding where there isn't something.
Eliminate that and use ours.
Yep. So the vertical measurement from grade to the highest point of the roof beams in flat roofs to the highest point on the deck of mansored roofs to a level midway between the level of the eaves and the highest point of pitched roofs or hip roofs, or to a level two-thirds of the distance from the level of the eaves to the highest point of the gambrel roofs. For this purpose, the level of the eaves shall be taken to mean the highest level where the plane of the roof intersects the plane of the outside wall on a side containing the eaves. Would, I just see.
Is that supposed to be a side?
Needs a space. Got it. I'll fix that. Any questions or comments on height?
I didn't know there were that many roofs.
Nobody's going to mess with you when it comes to height. No loopholes there.
Alright, moving on, home occupation. So here we were going to, where it says home occupation, we were going to say please see home-based business. And under home-based business, we were going to add a definition where there isn't one. An occupation or activity carried out for a gain, whereas such occupation or activity is clearly incidental and secondary to use of the premises as a dwelling and which is carried out wholly or in part within a main building or accessory building by a person who resides on the premises. And this, this didn't exist anywhere, correct?
It did not exist as a definition, but I have now discovered that it does exist in your bylaws.
Okay.
100-503, and there are two different types of home occupations, with a resident employee and with a non-resident employee. So there's, there's a lot here, we may want to simplify our definition to fit these. Don't take a look.
Which one is the brown?
Yeah, the red one.
These make it sound light. This gets confusing.
Yeah, I was a little nervous about this one.
Yeah. Well, it makes me feel better that we decided to go with the definition for home-based business. But I think what's going to be confusing is somebody who thinks that home occupation and home-based business are the same thing. So now perhaps we need to define home occupation to match up with 10503 instead of having it be please see home-based business?
Yeah, but I mean, they, they should be the same thing. You shouldn't need two different use regulations for it. But the home-based business, maybe we, we should probably keep it as a home occupation. Maybe use the term home-based business within the definition instead.
Maybe.
That way, if someone's searching, you know, Ctrl+F looking for it in the, in the document, they could find it either way. But it should probably fit with the fact that you could have a resident employee or a non-resident employee.
Yep.
Which is different from the end of ours, which says by a person who resides on the premises. I just didn't. I just didn't, I've never seen a home occupation with a non-resident employee. I'm not sure what that would be.
Hair salon with an employee?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Or a home-based daycare with an employee, something like that. Yeah, they have one person, or- But this stipulates that they can have-
I mean, it's, it's clearly got a definition, so are we, are we just confusing things, or do we?
So it doesn't say what a home occupation is here.
No.
Just this home occupation.
Yeah. I still think that our definition makes sense, and is probably necessary. I guess I'm trying to figure out, besides the title, we might need to-
I think maybe go back to home occupation, and then say, "A home-based business" or "Activity carried out for a gain," or something like that.
Yeah.
Technically, we are okay with a person who resides on the premises, but, um, there is that, there is an option for having an employee who is a non-resident as well.
Yep.
Um, but the business is owned, I think, by the resident.
Yeah.
So I don't think that-
By the resident.
I think that is actually okay, that we have that.
Or a residential tenant with the owner's permission.
Right.
Be a tenant.
Yep.
Maybe, then we need to say an occupation or activity carried out for a gain by the owner?
By a person who resides on the premises, or yeah.
It says wholly or in part, so, it's in part that kind of makes an assumption that somebody else is there as well.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, so a person who resides on the premises allows for what it says in one hundred five oh three.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
They reside on the premises, it can either be an owner or tenant, and that's clearly defined
Yep.
once we get to five oh three, but when we're just defining it, it's somebody, it's somebody who resides on the premises, that's, that's okay. Jack also highlighted the word gain, but didn't comment on it, so I'm not sure what his. Um, I, I understand, maybe, we wanna define financial gain, but they could also be receiving goods or services in exchange, so I, I don't know if that needs to be changed at all. I can ask him for more details.
Gain seems perfectly vague enough.
Yeah. I was hoping for vague, I think, yeah. I'll ask him if, you know, I'll try to get more comments out than just a highlight.
Okay.
But-
Do you reference them to be complicit with the zoning law? That way, it's referencing the zoning law?
We're just trying to define what a home-based business is here, right? Everything else has to be in the use, I think, I find this whole use thing to be more confusing than the definition, 'cause I'm looking at it, and it's going, you can't have any signs of the business outside, but you can have a sign, as long as it's within the sign bylaws, and you can, you can have a home-based business as a matter of right, unless you're not in a place where you can, which, where is that?
External evidence of the home occupation, but the sign shall be permitted.
So, perhaps we add this one to the list of things we need to really kinda dive into and, and take a look at. Yeah, this is part of specific uses and requirements, um, Article Five, which, um, definitely needs to be looked at in more detail. But, it would definitely be something we look at in conjunction with the use chart.
Yep.
My thought is either we can stick with this, or we can worry about defining it once we tackle this.
Get there?
I mean, our definition doesn't exclude anything from here, and doesn't, and this doesn't exclude anything that was said on there, so.
No, the only difference is that we should call it home occupation, and use the home-based business in the definition instead, so that this applies to that, and vice versa.
Okay, so I can make that change. Just change the definition to be about home occupation, will say, "A home-based business or occupation carried out for a gain, where such occupation is clearly incidental and secondary to use of the premises as a dwelling, which is carried out wholly or in part within a main building or accessory building by a person who resides on the premises."
Or an employee.
Or employee, yeah.
Or employee. Well, wholly or in part. Somebody-
Is it wholly in part, though, within the building?
Reside.
Now that I'm saying that?
I know, right, is it for the building part? Yeah. The business is owned by-
Yeah, I feel, I feel like-
Is employed by the resident?
Well, that would be in part, right?
Well, I think, reading it now, though-
Holy or in part.
It's like, where do you put the comma? Holy in part within a main building, so that maybe that wholly or in part-
It's about the building itself.
I mean, I would put the comma between building, and then, "By a person who resides on the premises."
Yep.
Yep.
Should we say wholly or in part within a main building or accessory building?
But the zoning says that you can have an employee.
Right, so, and I, and I think we should add to the end of our definition, or employee.
Yep. Or works, yeah, or works for the pres- the person who resides.
I, I think we need to be vaguer, I, I think, I, that's my feeling.
Well, this is specific, this is saying wholly.
Which is carried out wholly or in part within the main building or accessory building.
And then that's the end of that.
And then wholly or in part, by a person who resides on the premises, right?
Yep.
Wholly or in part by a person who resides on the premises.
Yep.
So that way, we include an employee.
Yeah.
Without, without using the word employee.
Exactly.
Okay, I can make those changes.
Okay.
I mean, do we even need the whole, "And which is carried out wholly or in part within a main building or accessory building?"
That's a fair question, I had that thought too.
I mean, if we're looking to just-
We just say, "Which is carried out in a main building or accessory building," do we need to say the wholly or in part there?
No. I don't see why. If, as long as it says clearly incidental and secondary to use of the premises of the dwelling.
You can do whatever you want, in any of the parts that you want.
Right, you can do your craft in the living room or the bedroom, it doesn't matter.
Hmm.
Yeah.
So which is carried out within a main building or accessory building?
Well, my question is, why do you even need that?
Yeah, it doesn't matter if you're in-
Oh, you wanna take out that whole piece, then?
Yeah.
Secondary to the use of the premises as a dwelling, period?
Period.
Period.
By a person who resides wholly or in-
Nope, by a person who resides on the premises, or an employee.
Who's the employee?
My question is, why do you have to bring focus to either the main building or the accessory building?
No, I'm saying, yeah, take that part out, but I think, I still think we should, I don't know why, I feel like we should avoid trying to say the word employee.
Because the business should be not owned by that employee, right? They're just an employee, but the, the owner of the business should be the resident. That's the important person.
Yeah.
In the definition, is that the resident owns it?
Yeah.
Yep.
The occupation or activity is clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the premises as a dwelling. Business should be conducted by, either wholly or in part by a person who lives on the premise, who resides on the premise.
Or could we do, a home, a home-based business or occupation, a home-based business owned by a person who resides on the pres- on the premises, carried out for a gain?
Yep. Yeah, that works.
Home-based business owned by a person. Who resides-
And then ends with dwelling.
Hmm.
Yep. Does that work?
Yeah.
Way better.
Yeah, but, and, and I'm looking at, you know, one hundred dash five oh three, and, um, home occupation occupies not more than one room?
Yeah, that, this is a, this needs work.
Yeah.
Needs work. I'm thinking of that, home daycare, and I'm like, no, that's not happening.
You at least have a bathroom.
A bathroom, right?
Yeah.
Yep, so I can make those changes, and, and then we can definitely tackle this whole, this whole, um, article, Article Five, of specific uses, and we can go through the sign bylaw and the-
When we're done, we'll have the whole thing we've written.
I'm thinking.
Right, we're just gonna keep following the, the crazy. Alright, um, we're good with home occupation?
Yes.
Alright. Lot area.
So, yeah, Joe said, gave a thumbs up on that. Um, Jack said needs context, but I haven't heard a reply back about what needs context.
Mm-hmm.
It needs context.
When we looked at some of the other, um, definitions on lot, what's gonna give specifics? I like this one, computed area contained within the lot lines. Done.
That's context, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't really see much in the way of context.
I can get more notes from him once I hear back.
I think it might, yeah, maybe ask him to give us a little bit more. I'm not, I'm not seeing anything that sticks out hugely to me, um, as being very different from what we were looking at.
Right.
Kennel. This one was missing. And so we were going to add kennel and stable.
Mm-hmm. Surprisingly, I haven't run into anything else, I, I was thinking it would be in that, you know, Ben breakfast, and, you know, all those, I thought I'd see kennel somewhere, nowhere.
But there's nothing in here, and there was no stable in here.
It might be in there, let me just check the, the chart itself. Because the charts don't work when you try to export them from Ecode, so, I have to rewrite them all.
The use charts?
Yeah. Like, I've tried like horses, equine, nothing. I think we only mentioned a horse is about horse paths, like, a little foot or bicycle path or horses. Nothing about, so, we can define these, but it's not even in the use regulations.
Yep. So they're not used? Um,
I wonder, I know, CMRPC was mentioning that there's another section, um,
There is.
Not zoning, is it, and then animals?
Uh, animals, yeah. That uses kennel.
Kennels, um.
I think it couldn't hurt to include these, especially if we know we're gonna take a stab at the use
Yeah.
schedule, um.
And I think, at, you know, at some point, it would be helpful if sections like this, that are not in zoning, are in zoning.
Yeah.
Because kennels are about zoning, but this section is about, you know, muzzling and biting. It's not about what properties are used for. So this whole kennel section should actually be in zoning, it shouldn't be in animal control.
Yeah.
Um, something like that would be sort of a, a joint effort between a few different departments and boards. We'd have to get to that.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was probably on all of them.
In the meantime, we can add some stuff in here to get us to the point where it won't be such a heavy lift later.
Yeah. I can also check with health to make sure they're comfortable with these two definitions.
Okay, I think that makes sense. Did, um, anybody else have anything to say about kennels and stables?
Straightforward.
Yeah. And Jack thought they were fine.
He just, uh, asked how many, but I think, um, that should be defined in the, the use chart.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Are stables limited to horses?
We have it as horses right now, um.
I think we looked up last time.
Where would you raise goats?
We have a boarding stable here, so that would only be when, like, you own a horse, but you don't have your own stable, and you keep the horse at somebody else's, like-
Although I can see the use of a goat stable.
Well, a goat, yeah.
So, so like, they're, they're really-
Agricultural use.
Yeah.
What's that?
Agricultural use.
Okay.
Be a goat, because you're using it for not recreational purposes, probably. You're probably using it for milk and butter, or just to have a pet.
They eat poison ivy.
You could have a goat stable, where people could rent out your goats to keep the poison ivy.
My brother-in-law was talking about this, like, this, um, a place where you can go to walk a goat.
Yeah.
Get a goat on a leash, it's like, why not just walk a dog?
Can't walk them up the street?
I don't know.
Yeah, they have like therapy goats, too, that like come to colleges, yeah, yeah.
Alright, so, yeah, I mean, I just, I just wanna make sure that, you know-
Poison ivy.
That we're inclusive of whatever we need to be inclusive of.
Um, I think we probably are.
Okay.
Okay.
Moving on.
Moving on, sign. This was missing.
Missing entirely.
This is great. Um, any words, letterings, figures, images, symbols, colors, numerals, emblems, devices, trademarks, or trade names, or any combination thereof by which anything is made known and which is designed to attract attention or convey a message?
Yeah, it's nice and vague.
Yeah, any feedback on that one?
No feedback, but section one hundred dash five oh one is the sign bylaw.
Yep.
Um, it doesn't define it, I don't think, anywhere, so I think what we're doing is right. Um, it just gives what's permitted, what isn't permitted, it's kinda long, I haven't read every word of it yet, but.
Not to exceed two square feet in surface area.
I think we need to define the word permitted.
There's a whole section later.
Yeah.
I mean,
Yep.
It says, it says what planning board, it says what, um, the building department does, it says what, um, CBA does, and then it has, um, planning board associate member, nothing else about the planning board. Not about the members, not about administration, it just- So I think that needs to be looked at.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but anyway, getting back to sign, uh, if there was no feedback, I, I think this one still makes sense to me.
Yep.
Look good to you?
Yeah.
Oh. Structure.
I have no comments on this one, didn't get any comments back from anyone. Um,
Anything constructed or erected, the use of which requires a more or less permanent location on the ground, or attached to something having a permanent location on the ground. I know we talked about this one a bit last time, um.
I think it was big enough to cover pretty much everything we talked about, different, different types of buildings, or different type of structures, or whether it's on wheels, or if it's movable, mobile homes, types like that.
Yeah, is that, we're kind of landed with more or less permanent, like, if it's intent, if its intent was to be permanent, kinda thing?
Yeah, I think where this sometimes runs into problems is, um, allowing mobile homes or RPs, um, but that can be completely, so we can add that in the use chart somewhere, that it shouldn't have to, it won't, like, affect this definition.
No, I think it was, that's the one that we probably need to write, a definition of a, of like, mobile home, things like that.
I know we have, um, what do they call it, um, manufactured home?
Yep.
Which is what it should be called these days, but, um, but I don't think it's like really fleshed out.
Okay.
But we don't have to use the word structure in that anyway, we just have to say, yes, you can live in this, or you can't live in that, yeah.
Alright, perfect. All right, and variance was our last one. Again, this was missing. Permission to depart from these bylaws when, because of special circumstances applicable to the property, strict application of the provisions of these bylaws deprives such property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity which are under identical zoning.
And I, I got this from somewhere. I don't remember where I got this, because I don't have the.
All right, we'll let you know.
Oh yeah, this is from one of the, one of the towns, I think.
Yeah, I think we, we maneuvered it a bit, but yeah.
Yeah.
We liked it because it referenced the bylaws which were preventing them from being able to do something.
Exactly, we weren't saying anywhere that they could just request a variance without cause.
Mm-hmm, Jack wanted me to check the legal definition of this. It's not in Black's dictionary, so I'm gonna just do a little more research, but to me, based on what I've been doing in CBA and Mendon, this is exactly what a variance would be.
Okay. All right, so these nine are pretty much buttoned up. We're not going to include agricultural use commercial for now, but maybe hang on to it for some other day. We're gonna rewrite the home occupation one, and maybe you can just bring that one to us at a future meeting so that we can just review that one more time, but other than that, the other eight would be pretty buttoned up. Does that sound good?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll write the warrant article for that.
Okay.
And I talked to Peter about warrant articles for the town meeting, we can have multiple, so we don't have to say, this is everything we want to do, we can say, here's some of the stuff that we know can pass.
Yep.
We can do grammar separate, we do a warrant article for that, and then if someone says no to this, we still have that.
We still get this.
We still make some.
Yeah.
Headway, yeah.
Perfect.
And that way, we wouldn't have to wait like two years to.
Yeah, exactly.
Is there anything big coming up in that meeting, is it?
I'm not sure.
I was just wondering how the attendance is going to be, how much you can.
I'll, I'll say right now, I might not be here, so we'll figure that out with Jack. When I accepted the employment, I asked for two weeks off as part of my contract.
Yep.
For my honeymoon, I think it's that week.
I'll enjoy it.
Yeah, I see what we can do, but I'll make sure it's all set up.
I'm sure you'll miss it.
Yeah, well, if not, we can try to get, see if Jack could be there, if not, and we've done it before. I don't want to, I don't want to put anything on pause.
Yeah.
For that.
Great.
Okay. All right, let's tackle spelling and grammar, because this one looks easy. So I'm actually.
This is it? Yeah, I just copied everything into a Word doc and went through, and then I found accordance these myself, but the rest of them were just tagged by Google.
Okay.
But they're pretty obvious.
Yeah.
accordance with these regulations, Massachusetts Department of Health, Board of Appeals, undue is the wrong kind of undue.
Yeah.
On D U E.
Yep.
Coastal should be coastal and therefore should have an E at the end.
Correct. I like the red pen ones, those are easy. Any discussion on those?
No.
It is, it's, it needs, grammatical errors need to be like voted on.
I don't know, I'm gonna check. I'm hoping we can just say, we fixed it.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's easily passable.
Yeah.
You know, I was just curious.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask about that.
Okay.
Because it seems like, who needs to?
All right, and now, let's look at your packet here.
Yep.
But so these are definitions that are already exist, but they exist in different places.
Yeah.
And so we'd be making a motion to take the definitions out of these sections and move them into our definition section without any changes to them, just to make it really clear and easy for everybody.
And there's a few pickups in that, obviously. So the first one is 100-303, which is the marijuana definitions, these first two pages here.
Yep.
They are duplicated, so they are in the definition section, our main definitions, and they're also in the marijuana section.
So we should get rid of them from the marijuana section?
Right.
Okay.
The first part of that says definitions, any term not specifically defined herein shall have the meaning as defined in Massachusetts general law, blah, 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 and the cannabis control commission regulations. So I want to keep that.
Yep.
So we might keep that section, and we'll say definitions, any term not specifically defined within these bylaws. Or in those two.
Yeah.
Separate laws, so keep that.
So keep that sentence at the beginning of all of our definitions.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay.
But yeah, they don't need to be duplicated, so this is duplicate.
All right, and then 100-702 just isn't in, it isn't in the definition section,
but that middle one there is definition for major residential development, and then just says as defined in 100-104. Not really a definition. I should have copied 100-104 for you guys as well.
But that's just a strike?
Oh, is that, 100-104 is the definition, so that one's included. But basic maximum number isn't, and tract isn't.
Okay, so we're deleting major residential development from this page and then moving the other two into the definitions?
Yes.
Yep.
So any new development that would create more residential lots? Is that same verbiage and they couldn't be put in the definitions?
Well, so we're gonna keep it there.
Oh, okay.
Keep it there, and then move the other two into that section.
Yep. 100-805.
This one. Pretty good. The only issue I had here was special flood hazard area. To me, that's not a definition, that is a designation of a location. So I wouldn't move this to the definition, the main definition section. I would include this as a, you know, something that is talked about in this area about floods, but it's not a definition, it's just saying what sections.
Right, as.
Yep. So you can word that part of the warrant so that we keep that wherever it needs to be, but move everything else?
Yeah, they also have structure here, right below it.
So that one. Oh, yeah. So we'd need to rewrite that one.
Mm-hmm. We can.
Do we have floodplain areas?
It would be, we do, we have it on F H B M.
Zone A.
Yeah, so these are zones that are not part of Millville's bylaw, but these are zones as defined by maybe the Massachusetts government or something like that. We have flood areas. And they have the special structure definition for floodplain management purposes.
But simply by having it just here as structure?
That doesn't really, it's not really structure, is it?
Put it towards, could you change it to special flood hazard area structure, you know, like include?
Where would, where would structure be used in, in our bylaws for this purpose?
For this purpose, here, let me pull it up. Should be around 100-805, probably like 100-801 or something. Yeah, in 100-804, it uses, uses the word structure several times.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm not sure that. Yeah, it uses the word structure a lot. One, two, three, four, five, five towns, six towns, in 100-4. And in the definition of the word development.
Yeah.
And in the definition of lowest floor, manufactured home. Yeah, see, manufactured home is here, which.
Yeah.
We shouldn't only be defining it for the purposes of floodplain management. Do, I don't know if you guys know if there's anyone doing any conservation, do we have a conservation agent?
I don't have a conservation agent.
And so, but I don't know if there's anyone who can sort of comment on how, you know, how necessary these defined here, you know?
Yeah.
Well, they're very specific to.
Right.
To floodplain and, you know, qualifying with our other definition of structure would be like a fence.
Right.
Which would not be covered or defined as part of.
I'm gonna look at, I'm gonna look at Mendon, I'm gonna see what they have.
Maybe if, if this becomes a bigger project, we save this one for another time. Because, yeah, these do seem very specific to this section and, and there'd be a lot of reworking that we need to be having.
Yeah, so I think this one.
Some issues legally or something.
Right, so we can just hold on to that one, leave it where it is for now.
Yep.
Just because it's so specific.
And then 902, we talked about before. Is the wireless communications facility district.
The CMRPC also has a problem with the fact that we have separate articles for all these districts. They think we should have one article with all the special districts in it, especially because we have marijuana that's not in its own article.
Yeah.
But this is, and floodplain is, so we're not being consistent.
Yep.
So right now, it's its own article, and I think that's why we ended up with definition sections for, for these.
Gotcha. Well, these, I think, these ones make sense to move over, I think. I don't see anything here that seems special, besides where it says special permit granting authority for the purpose of this bylaws, the planning board, although for most of what we're talking about here, it's still us anyway, so.
Yeah, I just start that one because another comment from CMRPC is that I think this is the only place in the whole bylaw that says that the planning board is an authority at all.
Just maybe move that one up.
Flush that out, yeah.
Beginning.
We can have structure in seven places, but planning boards in one.
Yeah. But I think things like municipally owned land, wireless communications building, there's just certain ones like non-residential structure, now we're getting into the weird stuff again.
Yep.
You know? But we can plan to move the ones that are, they could fit anywhere.
Yep.
Wireless communications device, that's not going to change anywhere else in the bylaw. And then at the end of this one, it also had zones listed as definitions, which shouldn't really be the case. That should be its own designations or something, you know?
I think, sorry, I got stuck on non-residential structure and how that could be different from ours, but I'm quickly looking through the uses of them here, and I don't think that there's any special use for it that, I mean, it is what it is, it's our definition of structure, plus it's, you don't live in it.
Right.
So maybe we could just not keep that one.
Yeah.
Because we're defining structure instead.
Yeah. And we can just talk about these today as well, and I can sort of, you know, take what we've talked about.
Flush them out.
Yeah, I'll bring it to you next time, yeah.
Okay, so.
Is it me, or is that zoning, the zones at the end are on almost every section?
Yeah.
Is that for insurance purpose, like is that so that it can be referenced specifically in case of?
It's so it can be referenced, and I think it's because instead of making two separate sections, definitions and zone distinctions, they just.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean, so I don't know if that's intentional?
So should we make a section for zones?
I would, we can move them where they are.
Yep.
Unfortunately, I wouldn't consider that to be a definition.
No, it's not.
They should just be described in, in this article at some point, but not as a definition.
My thing is, and I'm not sure if I'm going to verbalize this the right way, but in the course of action of trying to pay out an insurance policy, and it's not defined.
Needs to be defined somewhere.
Yeah, that's what I mean, but if it's not in this section, does that make whatever, that's all.
Doesn't have to be this section.
Right, gotcha.
But it has to be somewhere.
That's why, it seems like somebody intentionally put it there.
Yeah, it's definitely.
It wasn't random, so was there a reason for it or not?
Yeah.
That's the reason.
Let's tack it on the end.
I didn't know if there was anything specific, like, oh, oh, well, you do that, you're opening yourself up to this.
I mean, look at the, the use regulations chart at the beginning of it, it defines what the zones are.
Yeah.
They aren't defined in the definition section, they're defined at the beginning of the use chart. RC is, you know, residential, like says it.
Yeah.
That's all we need to do, doesn't have to be considered a definition.
Gotcha. All right, so where do you want to start in talking about these ones?
The, which one? What's that?
The next one? Yeah, do you want to, oh, sorry, you want to talk about one?
11.
1103, sorry, yep.
These ones should be very simple, I think we can just move them.
Yeah.
That's not gonna interfere with anything else.
And that's everything in that section?
There's just three of them.
There's three.
Yeah.
So we'd move these to definitions. We're gonna move the marijuana ones to definitions, we're gonna move.
702.
702, we're just gonna take out that piece in the middle.
It's already defined.
We're gonna hold on 805 for now, and 902, we probably need to go through and talk about them.
So I'm gonna hold 805 and 902.
Okay.
The other ones, I think, are easy.
Yep.
These ones are a little more messy.
Okay. If we keep 902, we don't, we don't address it, moving it at this point, should we still consider removing height and non-residential structure, since they're going to be in our definitions, and we don't want to have?
Competing, yeah.
Yeah, competing definitions.
That was height in which other one?
Non-residential structure. By defining structure in the other section.
Right.
I think we need to define non-residential structure here.
And then, and then the one.
We're moving 1103 entirely. Okay. I will go through all of these and write them up and, you know, decide what, what we talked about.
Okay.
There was a handful of additional definitions on that first chart that you gave us a couple of weeks back. I don't know if we want to try to tackle another one or two while we're here, or did, sorry, I meant to ask you before, did Peter give you a sense of a deadline that we'd be working against, like when we would need to have warrants in and?
I can ask.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have an idea.
I think the next one we're up to is non-conforming lot.
Yes, non-conforming lot.
Seems like a pretty important one to try to get in.
I did print off this document that we were working on last time, does anyone need a copy?
Let's look at that.
Here.
Getting used to printing for you guys, sorry. We were just so virtual for a while. All right, and so, non-conforming lot, we currently have nothing, correct?
Yep, currently nothing.
We're looking at either lot, non-conforming, or non-conformance. And do you have a, any thought on that before we?
Uh, yeah, so we have a section. Uh, yep, um, so we have a section on the bylaws, let me split it up. About non-conformities, um, one hundred dash one oh five. And it gives some different, um, types of non-conformities. Did you say one oh five?
Yeah.
Yep.
So there's no, there's no definition here?
Yeah, there's no definition, but there's a bunch of.
Like even A continuation and change, any structure, isn't that the definition? Any structure or use of, does not conform to requirements?
Yeah.
So a section's written. We just gotta come up with a definition to go towards.
Yes.
The only thing that was sticking out was with these, was that all of them seems to be that they were lawful previously.
Yes. Yep. Um, usually that's sort of when a variance would come up.
Yeah.
Z B A. Um, you have a lot of undersized lots, like in Mendon, they, you were talking, they have these tiny lots by the lake because back in the fifties, they give them just a little bit of space. But now that's not allowed anymore. You can't have that small of a lot.
Gotcha.
So building anything on it wouldn't be allowed.
Okay, I understand.
Even rebuilding on them?
Mm-hmm. So they'd have to go to Z B A to, to add anything, make any changes to their building. Can't add a garage, can't, can't redo your house if it's increasing the percent of your lot that's being used. So, uh, non-conforming lot has to be, you have to allow people to, to do something on it, but we just.
You have to define it.
Z B A, yeah, check it. Yeah.
So I was looking at the, the last bullet in the first block. And thinking that we could modify it to perhaps fit a lot or parcel of land that was of record and lawfully established and maintained, but which no longer conforms to the land use standards or use regulations in the zone in which it is located.
Yeah.
It's kind of vague and simple. Which should probably capture those lots of lands that we're trying to talk about here.
Yep. Cause it's just a definition. It doesn't mean anything. So they're not gonna be allowed. It's just put you over, it brings you to that.
It doesn't matter how they fell out of conformity.
Yeah, that's why I figure maybe leaving that piece of it out.
I like it.
I guess the only, the, the, I guess it's the existing, the legally existing previous to code. So does that restrict people from doing any kind of eighty-one Ps where they separate their lot? Because there weren't, again, trying to get the words out of my brain. If they wanna split their property, but, you know, you, you would teach me about flag lots. Well, that's not a non-conforming lot, but it was never legal.
Yeah.
So these definitions only stated as previously legal. I guess previously illegal before they tried splitting it. Maybe that's where that would be covered? Am I explaining, am I asking the right question?
Yeah.
Yep.
I know this one actually in Mendon right now, um, because you can't make a non-conforming lot more non-conforming. So if you're gonna, you have two parcels and you wanna like move the lot line over and they're both non-conforming, you kinda can't.
Right.
You're already kinda stuck with what you have. Um, but sometimes you can if you go to Z B A, they'll allow it. So it wouldn't be an eighty-one P, it wouldn't be a, an A and R.
Oh, that's right, cause it's not A and R.
They need.
It's just not automatic approval.
Yeah, yeah. It's, approval is required, I think, yeah. Yeah, if it's non-conforming, then, uh, an A and R might be difficult. I know this one going through, Mendon right now, um, brought the, the eighty-one P to the board and then they saw that it was a non-conforming lot. And they said, has Z B A commented on this previously? And they said, yes, in like two thousand and two or something. So, yeah, so it's sort of in the works right now. I can see what happens with it.
So that doesn't apply, so everything would be, it's non-conforming, so it would have to be going to the Z B A anyways.
Anyway, yeah.
Okay. It just seems like there's a lot of landlocked lots in this town. Everything's behind, everything's behind the frontage.
Yeah.
Yep. Does that definition, do you think, work?
That looks good for now. I'll definitely ask Jack.
Yeah.
Some more comments.
Okay. Commercial vehicle. This is another one that we're missing.
Yep.
And I think, um, defining this would be helpful. I know it's come up before that, uh, that this isn't defined, so.
So now, as far as the state is concerned, because we do registry inspections and stuff, their, their point of view is that if it's for commercial pro, um, purposes, it's a commercial vehicle. So it's literally, uh, you're in the process of performing commerce.
Yeah.
It's a commercial vehicle.
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty simple.
Um, the only place in the zoning section of the bylaw, I think that it exists, is in the home occupation section. Talk about traffic by commercial delivery vehicles should not be generated in greater than, what's it, greater volumes that would normally be anticipated in a residential neighborhood. I don't, I think that might be the only place.
It's almost like the first definition's perfect if you drop off the weight.
Yeah.
You know? Is that also, you carry freight and passengers, you know, the one second from the bottom?
Is too specific.
Right. Whereas this, it has or. So you're carrying, taking care of people, you're taking care of freight, merchandise in a commer, in a commercial setting.
Is there any, um, I, I remember this coming up before in talking about this and it, it had to do with weight. Like, is there any reason to include weight on this, like, or?
Well, Joe, for instance, just bought a brand new truck, but his, his weight of the vehicle actually makes it required to be commercial, cause it's gotten, there's no reason to have a vehicle like that for a non-commercial use.
Yep.
So with his, yeah, you're probably right, but.
But in our definition, like, does it matter if it's a dump truck or if it's a pickup truck that's used for commercial purposes?
Zoning?
It really doesn't, right?
Thinking outside of the fence, I think it leaves a registry stuff for them as far as those ancillary things. You have the ancillary requirements to go commercial, be weight.
Yeah. It doesn't have to do with zoning. Just has to do with maybe licensing. Um, if you have any bridges, there needs to be signs up. But that would already be the case. You'd already need to have those signs up.
When we get to zoning, like, we wouldn't have rules or definitions that, like you said, that the home-based occupation one said something about commercial vehicles coming in and out, like. I guess that's what I'm thinking, like that type of stuff. Is there gonna be an issue? Is there any place where us not defining a commercial vehicle is something bigger than what it is? Is that going to come back later?
Anything where, we're making it broader.
Yeah.
What's simpler?
Yeah, I think broader is better anyway, because, you know, someone might have nine thousand pounds. What are we gonna do with that, you know? Ten thousand pounds, like, you know, it's, it's.
Well, let me go get my scale.
It's nothing that's gonna affect us.
Yeah.
It might affect, um, roads maintenance and things like that, but that's not, um, that would just be the licensing of the vehicle. Nothing about how it's zoned.
Yep.
Cause we're not, we're not permitting the vehicle. We're just saying vehicles that might have to do with businesses in, in town.
And there was no other place in our section that talks about commercial?
Uh, C M R P C just put this on as maybe something that is often defined in towns that they encounter.
Yeah.
The fact that, you know, we're not using a lot of it. It could be used with zoning violations, um, which isn't usually like very clear in most bylaws from what I understand. It's sort of, you know, if it's not in the use chart, it's a violation or, um, sometimes there's specific violations that are listed in the use chart, like, you can, you can only have a junkyard in these districts, but not these. So then if you find someone who's in the other district, you can, you know, issue a violation. We have, uh, the town over, some commercial vehicles parked on a commercial lot, but, um, for a different type of business. There's things like that, but, um, this wouldn't affect it. The weight wouldn't really make a difference.
Didn't, when we were talking about parking, didn't we, didn't we talk about, you know, like the, the number of vehicles on, like, a property?
Yep.
And would the, would it have any bearing whether or not they're, you know, regularly licensed or registered vehicles versus registered commercial?
I don't know about you guys, but, um, that can come into play with Z B A. Let me see if you have anything on garages. Because usually you can have a garage on a single-family dwelling or maybe, uh, two garages at a single-family dwelling, but they can only be used for residential vehicles.
I think that's where I'm thinking that this came up before. It was like the number of commercial vehicles on a residential property. Is that?
Yeah.
Something that?
So, I mean, we should definitely define this.
Well, um, if we say that, and now I'm putting a different hat on, but like if, it's, what's the restrictions on commercial vehicles on a residential property? There's nothing?
We don't have it?
We have nothing.
That's the thing. So we can define it broadly now and then, once we get to use regulations, we can say.
Cause I think that's where it would maybe get dicey, because somebody might say, oh, I have my pickup truck for work and my pickup truck for home and now I've, how many, you know?
Yeah.
How many of these, I bring home my work truck kinda thing. I, I feel like this conversation.
Well, one would be registered, res, like regularly, and the other one would be resident. Would be registered commercially though, right? The work for work for commerce would be.
Yeah.
And for us, actually taking out the fact that it could be registered commercial because of weight.
Makes it.
Would benefit.
Benefit them, yeah.
Like Joe, his truck's Rover, but it's not for commerce. He likes big trucks.
Yeah. Yeah, we're leaving it very open here in this definition. I think that's a good idea, because we can get tighter with it if we wanna add anything to the use chart.
We can get tighter with it in the use chart.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And what's, what's freight?
Freight is goods. Um, is that something we need to define?
Well, I mean, um, any motor vehicle trailer or semi-trailer designed or used to carry freight, passengers for a fee, or merchandise.
Freight is goods, um, in bulk. So that's interesting because technically like a delivery truck isn't so much bulk. It's a lot of different things, maybe. But let me look at.
But if you're, i- if you're a landscaper and you have a trailer and you're carrying lawn care equipment, like, that doesn't match any, anything.
That's here.
That's here.
Well, I guess it would.
I would imagine that that trailer would have to be registered commercial.
It's a freight, passengers for fee, equipment or merchandise.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Equipment, I think.
I mean, I would add equipment. That's vague enough.
Yeah, freight, passengers for fee, equipment or merchandise.
But I feel like it's missing.
Yeah, I think you're right. Yeah. I think that's, like landscaping is the exact example that that would. Think of that. Time check at seven twenty-eight, by the way.
Maybe, maybe get, um, Jack and, and Joe to weigh in on that one too.
Yeah, I will.
Think about this one a little bit further next week.
Yeah.
Okay. Thinking of like dumpsters and stuff like that. You know, we've had conversations about.
Yeah.
Whether or not the dumpster's on the truck or dumpster's not on the truck and.
Yep. Yep, whether they keep them on the truck or.
Yeah.
Roll them off onto the ground.
That's important.
Yeah.
I definitely have to excuse myself, um, but, um, you guys can certainly continue.
Do we want to close, so you have to? I think we'd only, we wouldn't have enough people to keep the meeting going, right?
Yeah.
So.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have to pick up my.
That's horrible.
All right, uh, uh, next meeting, two weeks. Does that still work?
Yes.
Uh, yep.
Okay, and, um, that would be the twenty.
Two twenty-seven.
Two twenty-seven. Um, you wanna do it here again?
Yeah, I, doesn't it feel good to just be like kinda chewing through some of this stuff that we've just, we've just had?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah.
Feels like we're doing something. All right, so, uh, two twenty-seven at six here. Uh, motion to close the meeting?
So motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
All right. Sorry.